So we are starting a Canal Street Safe Street Corridor Plan and Stormwater Planning. That's a mouthful. Basically, oh, I should say, I'm Sue Philin, I'm the planning director. And with us tonight are consultants SLR, this is Holly Parker, Dave Sullivan, and Brian Cooby, who are all helping work on the project. So what we're doing is, this is a planning study of Canal Street. This is a roadway in town that we, is old. It's built for cars, not really for bicyclists and people walking or wheeling along the corridor. And we've recognized this for a long time at the Traffic Safety Committee meetings. We get a lot of complaints about the safety of intersections and how people feel when they're walking across it. So part of this study is going to be looking at how do we improve the roadway for all users, not built for cars. We are also looking at stormwater management in this corridor. We're really grateful that we received a grant from three state agencies. It's called the Better Connections Grant Program. And we have funding from Vermont Agency of Transportation, the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. We have faith they'll hear from, from them today, so thank you for coming down. And also from the Department of Environmental Conservation at the Agency of Natural Resources. So those are the funding partners. We're really grateful for them. We're excited about this work. I'm going to turn it over to Holly Parker, who has a presentation, and then we'll have discussion and maybe some, an activity to collect your comments.
Thanks, Sue. So I'm a transportation planner with SLR, and I'm the active transportation lead, which means I am engaged with bicycle, pedestrian infrastructure and transit and all the things that are non-car travel. Dave Sullivan is a plan engineer. He's a planner and engineer and runs our transportation planning practice at SLR. Our offices are in New Haven. Brian is here as a natural resources engineer, who's in our Waterbury office. So he's actually further away from Brattleboro than we are in Connecticut, surprisingly. But we are, it may seem funny to just look at really in-depth at one little stretch of road, but it's important. We're going to show you the existing conditions on it. I think maybe because of the work I do when I go on vacation, I also just go to, I like to go to one small place and get to know it really well. So it's kind of what we're doing here, we're getting to know Canal Street tonight. So we're going to make sure we put questions and comments right in the agenda because we want to make sure we take pause after each section and make sure we're having an active dialogue about everything that we're covering here. So we're going to kind of start with a little background and context in the timeline of the project, and then move into the transportation, bicycle, pedestrian driving conditions. Next will be economic development and land use. So one of the parts, one of the things we're looking at in this project is also opportunities for economic development. We're kind of widening up the area, making more activities and places of rest and draws for commerce in the area and housing. We're going to look at the stormwater because that is an issue in the area. And then we'll, at the end, we'll ask you to write on sticky notes and put notes on any of these maps that are at a pretty large scale. So the area is actually, this is the study area, you see in yellow here, it goes from the, I wasn't going to say malfunction junction, but I know if I say it, you all will know where I mean. So the area at Bridge Street and South Main Street and Canal Street, kind of where they all come together near the co-op, is the northeasternmost end of the corridor. And then it ends, the other end of it is right before exit one on Interstate 92. So like we said, we're going to talk about, well, we didn't talk about this, but we are going to talk about improvements that make it easier to walk or bike or use a wheelchair, ride the bus in the corridor, improvements to public space and commercial spaces, and integrating the best practices in stormwater management so that we're addressing those problem areas and improving water quality. So we're on our bicycle right now. We're kind of, we picked things up in the spring with a walking tour with our steering committee and Sue and DPW staff. And we've got a really good feel for what's happening in the corridor. So we've got some pictures we'll share and some kind of overview, general comments and more detailed ones. We're going to be doing community engagement through the summer and fall where we'll be, you know, Sue has already started having a lot of conversations with community groups and with local folks and with the hospital stakeholders in the area. And then we're going to draft a plan and finalize it in the winter. It all goes according to plan, which we often do, not always though. So the previous studies we looked at were the, well, we conducted the Walk-Bike Action Plan last year. So we got actually a first taste of what people were thinking about Canal Street as part of that project. And we have some comments from that project that, first of all, very much, it might help give you ideas when you take a look at them. You'll probably agree with a lot of them. There was a stormwater master plan and stormwater infrastructure mapping project in 2022 and '23. I put on there the Route 5 statewide bicycle corridor project because I'm not sure it's actually a project, but it was an assessment to see if all of the communities that are along Route 5 would be interested in trying to come together and create a bike way that goes the entire length of the state. So that's exciting, and we're at the bottom part of the state. So, you know, maybe if we, if there is enough interest in, we think, we've heard that Gilford is interested, that's something we can keep in mind as we're, as we're planning. The downtown plan in 2021, we have looked very carefully through that. There were a lot of great ideas, some really interesting planning that was done in that project. The town plan from 2018, shared priorities for transportation and economic development that we'll be referring to. And the design for resilience in the Lower Whitestone Brook was done in 2017.
Were we involved?
No. And the gateway strategy for the Canal Street Commercial District was done 23 years ago now, but actually had some really good ideas in it too. The idea being that as you're coming in off 91, you know, that Fairgrounds Road area, the Marketplace 32, Price Chopper Plaza is kind of an opportunity to, with streetscaping and maybe signage, making that a welcome into Brattleboro. So some of the comments, sorry, that's kind of small text, but from the Walk-Bike Master Plan, I put as the first one that Canal Street blocks pedestrians, bikes, and community use of the street. It's too loud, there's not enough shade trees, it's a hostile environment, anyone who's not in a car. And that this corridor should be the heart of a walkable neighborhood. So we had this interactive mapping tool as part of the Brattleboro Walk-Bike Action Plan, and heard a lot about Canal Street as part of that project. So the sidewalks are in disarray, there's no bike lanes, suggestion to get rid of the turn lanes on Canal Street because they make the street too wide. The traffic is moving too fast, it's hard to cross, it's hard even for drivers to cross Canal Street. And the area, you know, near the train station is really dangerous for bikers, there's so much activity in that area. And, you know, three times people mentioned the entry point to Canal Street at Oak Grove and Belmont intersections because cars are coming up the hill so fast. And flashing stop signs at Canal or the intersection of going down Allen Street by the Early Education Center. And at Canal and Burge intersection, and also by Price Chopper, the Market 32. About four times people mentioned that intersection of Maple and Pine Street.
Can you speak up when you're facing that way? We can't hear anything back here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I will speak up. So, right, the intersection of Maple and Pine Street is very hard for people to navigate, I think, again, in any mode of transportation. And Fairground Road crossing at that intersection, there isn't enough time for pedestrians to cross. And there is a lot of crossing activity there because Red Clover Commons is there and the high school kids are crossing over to Dunkin' Donuts, and there's just, there's a lot going on there. So on, when we kicked off the project back in April or May? May, we had a nice walk of the corridor and had a lot of observations. Some of the, some of the general ones were there are a lot of curb cuts, meaning places where cars can come and go. So, you know, where there isn't curb and cars can come in and out a lot, they, it can lead to kind of unpredictable behavior, and the pedestrian or cyclist doesn't necessarily know how to navigate the area with cars coming and going. Think about the Burge-Washington Canal intersection where there's, you know, the gas station in particular is just, it's all kind of open. So there, it just seems like there's, there's a lot of opportunities for conflicts there. The street kind of widens and shrinks. This is completely normal, and it happens in all communities, but it can make it challenging to put new treatments to fit bike lanes or widen sidewalks sometimes if you have enough space in one part of it and you don't have another space, you don't have enough space in another part of the roadway. This is why a lot of the times bicyclists are riding along in a nice bike lane and it suddenly ends. So we looked at all of those opportunities and challenges. V-Trans is planning a mill and pave of Canal Street through Brattleboro as early as next month or?
No, 2025.
2025, it will be next summer. Okay. So 2025, 2026. So that's an amazing opportunity because if we were going to put in any kind of new crosswalks or bike lanes or anything like that, they'll have the paint truck out to put new, you know, to put the shoulders and the center lines in. So that would be also an opportunity to put in crosswalks and sidewalks, or not sidewalks, but anything that needs to be painted. And yeah, there, through a lot of the corridor, there probably is room to accommodate bike lanes. And the new manual on uniform traffic control devices, otherwise known as the MUTCD, does have some expanded options for bicycle facilities. So where in the past we have been constrained at some, you know, with some types of treatments there, now is, they're thinking a little bit more expansively on that, so we might have other opportunities we could consider that haven't been possible before. So I'm going to turn things over to Dave, and he's going to speak a little bit about the issues and opportunities in the corridor. And he has a louder voice than I do.
Thank you, Holly. Again, Dave Sullivan, transportation planner and engineer. Going to go through some of the existing conditions, this first chart appears, some of the stuff we identified in our field walks. But I'm probably not going to tell you much that you don't already know. And we're expecting, the purpose of this meeting is to find out what we don't know. We don't live this quarter every day. We could study it and learn what we can, but the best information we're going to get is from you guys. So with that being said, I'll try to do this as efficiently as possible. Again, we walked the corridor, not only in the, walked as Holly mentioned, but one of our engineers came out, well, actually a couple, one focusing on stormwater issues and one focusing on traffic issues. Some of the obvious observations is when the train comes, obviously, everything stops. And of course, the bridge will be replaced and soon to be relocated, but that gives us an opportunity to fix things up there. There'll be intersection improvements to some extent, there'll be opportunities for signal improvements and things of that nature. So again, we see things as we go through the corridor. We're looking for opportunities as well as constraints that may be out there today. The Canal Park, we see opportunities there for maybe some revamping as we're looking at some of the other components of this besides the traffic. Some of the issues we saw, the poor visibility coming out of that, the intersection as you're coming northbound on Canal Street. This bus shelter, that's a positive because there's a bus shelter, it's a negative because it's the only one in the corridor, and it's not really on Canal Street. So we'll be looking at that as we take a deeper dive into transit enhancements. Limited sidelines, again, from Washington Street onto Canal, limited sidelines from Maple Street, looking left on Canal. There's steep grades, as you point out, when you get past the hospital and you're, you're coming northbound. It's a fairly significant grade, which caused travel speeds to increase. So that's another concern that we're certainly well aware of. We did an inventory of all the sidewalks. This is an example of a sidewalk in what we consider disrepair when we get to the bottom end of the corridor. The signal equipment, we understand, and from observation, see that it's not operating as it should be. And as a opportunity, there's opportunities there. We can improve the signal, we can improve the geometry around the signal, we can look at other types of treatments. And it also gives us what we were thinking and Holly referred to, what we do at this intersection may be able to be combined with some type of gateway treatment. So that's what we see for our quick roadway opportunities. Some of those are pointed out again there, so I won't go through all of those. Some of the details, these are the sidewalk conditions. So a good sidewalk is, in this case, it's five feet or better, it's in good repair, it doesn't need any maintenance. And even the good sidewalks, they're not perfect sidewalks. And if we were building all the roads brand new, we would have some type of buffer strip between the travelway and the sidewalks. But the sidewalk itself, if it's in good shape, you can see there's a few spots where we consider it a good, functional. It might be a very good sidewalk, would a very good surface, but it doesn't meet the width requirements that we like to see. And of course, a poor sidewalk, that's the same picture from the previous slide where there's cracks and other problems with it. This is showing where there's crosswalks in the corridor, I won't spend too much time on this, but when we did this inventory of the crosswalks, we were also evaluating the accessibility geometry of handicap ramps, things of that nature, and if the signal on either end had the proper signalization parameters that we like to see on traffic Transit network, again, this looks like a bunch of spaghetti, but you can see along Canal Street, there is good bus service. I think there's three local routes and a couple of, well, one regional route that goes along Canal Street and access to the Bellas Falls, Brattleboro, through downtown, but it's not directly on Canal Street. Average annual daily traffic, this may or may not tell you anything, but it tells us a lot. The volume of traffic on section of road helps inform what options we can look at. For instance, on-street bike lanes have certain speed and traffic volume limits, so we wouldn't want to put on a very high-speed, a high-traffic road, we wouldn't want to put a bike lane in the shoulder, for example. So this is important information, but you can see, obviously, the heavies traffic is near the interchange, and it tends to drop off. And then again, when we get over the bridge, it picks back up to over 10,000. What's interesting is the volume of traffic on the segment of Canal Street is almost the same as the volume of traffic on one of the barrels of I-91. So it's a significant, significant number.
Are all of those numbered one-way for each of the roads, just like they are for the highway?
Two-way.
But you did both lanes on the highway.
Right. This information is not gathered by us, it's, this is from V-Trans, we got it from the GIS. So they provide, when it's a one-way street, they provide the one-way traffic volume, when it's a two-way street, they provide the two-way traffic volume.
Thank you.
Crash details. So we got three of these, and these are interesting. And we'll do a deeper dive on all of the crash information, but this helps us stand back and say, okay, we're sure we'd be focusing our attention. And without knowing much here, you can see the three bright spots of where, of the total crashes, which in five years, there was 188 of them within our study area. And where were most of those crashes? Well, 47 of them down at Malfunction Junction. So that's probably not a surprise to anyone. And then we had a lesser amount, but still significant enough that it showed up as a hotspot at Burge and again at Fairgrounds Road and the Shopper Plaza. So then we peeled down and said, okay, there's a lot of crashes, and these are probably a lot of fender benders because people aren't going very fast. So then we looked at it and we said, what do the injury accidents look like? Well, we know there's 29, but what do they look like on the same type of spread? Now, just keep in mind, the yellow and the hotspots are for the data that's put in. So this, these hotspots are based on the 29. So this yellow is not the same as the previous yellow in terms of magnitude. But what we did find out of the injury crashes, most were at Burge, five injury crashes, four over in the cluster here in front of the gas station, and three at the Fairgrounds Road intersection. And as we might have suspected, the only three of the 47 crashes over at Malfunction Junction resulted in injury. And then we took an even deeper dive and said, well, how many accidents out of the 188 accidents involve bicycles or pedestrians? We went through the same process, and where there's more pedestrians, you have more pedestrian collisions. So there was only 12, but out of those 12, 11 resulted in injury, which is why we're so concerned about pedestrian and bicycle collisions.
Dave, can I just jump in and point out the four crashes are actually at the South Main Street and Canal Street area. Like, so it's from South Main all the way down to Bridge Street. Because South Main Street is one of our principal intersections.
Good, thank you. Speed limits, these again, probably don't mean much, they probably, they're informative because they tell you what people should be traveling. And our goal is to calm the streets such that people feel comfortable at this speed and not at significantly greater speeds. However, we know that these are not realistic speeds. The, the travel speeds out here, which we would typically do our design based on, we call 85 percentile, which is 85% of the traffic is traveling at those speeds or more or less, is more likely in 40 mile an hour range through here, particularly as you're coming downhill northbound.
So the on-street parking?
Yes, we also, we do say on-street parking, but you can see some, up, some, the areas where the dark green is, that's where on-street parking is allowed. It's, it's something that we have to look at very carefully because on-street parking is important, but it also encompasses a valuable resource when it comes to other use of the right-of-way. So it's a very important element of our analysis. And that's it for traffic-transportation things. So we can take questions now or input, but one of the best takeaways for us will be at the end, where everybody can actually document their thoughts and concerns, and we can take a moment and sit down.
Hi. Since it's Vermont State Route 5, does that impose limitations in terms of widening narrow points? Is it mainly because of the geography and like topography of Canal Street that you can't make it wider in some places? Or is it, does it have to do with it being a state route?
It's a state route, it's maintained by the town. So it's not, we call a state-state route. So if you go on the other side of the interchange, for example, the state does all the maintenance and on the road, as you come through here, it's a little bit different. In terms of constraints to widen the road, I'm struggling a little bit because our intention is not to widen the road for more cars.
Oh, no, I meant for pedestrians and bicycles because it's also going to be really tough to take off some of those turning lanes because it's so busy.
Right. So I think if we, the bigger constraint is going to be, can we do it between the right-of-ways? If we could do it between the right-of-ways and engineer a plan that doesn't require any takings, I'm sure the state will look to make sure that it meets their standards, which we designed to, but they would not be opposed to anything that falls. And Holly mentioned the MUTCD. Interestingly, it's more of a guidance document, but a lot of DOTs rely on that. So they'll, if it's not MUTCD, it's definitely not in a DOT's design plan. So now that MUTCD is expanding, we're hopeful we have more choices through the DOT as well.
I already forgot what MUTCD says.
Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So they tell us everything, like what size the stop sign letter should be to what bicycle treatments are safe, a lot of them.
It's what we referenced to know that your parking signs are not compliant. It's very forgettable, but yeah.
With the new bridge, are there already plans in place for what you call Malfunction Junction? Because I, I don't know if I can miss that somewhere, but I just, like, I don't have that background, so it's hard to look forward without knowing the back part of it.
My understanding, I haven't seen plans, but my understanding is, well, DOT, V-Trans will certainly need to have an opening plan in place, whether that's simply revising the timing and changing how the priorities at the intersection work, or if it's more dramatic than that. But I have not seen plans at this point yet, but it's something we're, so, we'll certainly be addressing.
What we've been told at the town is that it's going to be looking at the light signalization. You shouldn't expect actual physical changes.
That's the only thing that is going to change.
The light?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't really, there's not a lot of space. I walk on rural streets, so that's why I'm very interested.
The only thing that the new bridge is going to do is that it's going to remove some of the traffic that has to cross the train tracks. Nothing else is going to change, except for the fact that now all heavy traffic traversing that intersection, which will still have to traverse that intersection, will now have to make a 225-degree turn followed by an immediate 90-degree turn. And there will be a light at the, at the bridge at the 90-degree turn, I understand, but it's going to be a disaster. And there will be a light at the, at the bridge at the 90-degree turn, I understand, but it's going to be a disaster.
Back to your comments about sidewalks and them being functioning and accessible. I'm curious if the, one of the definitions of a properly functioning and accessible sidewalk is its tactile boundaries. I think, for example, about this, this should-be sidewalk space in front of Portland Glass, and I can't find any boundary of it. I ended up, if I'm going to walk all the way to the road, through this cane, I ended up walking, or all the way to the building with a cane, I ended up running the risk of walking in the road. Is that, is that one of the definitions, is tactile boundaries of sidewalks?
Well, we, we did look at that. What we were pointing out in the sidewalk conditions was just the sidewalk. So as you were going through these areas where there's not necessarily sidewalk, through the opening, these large openings, particularly there's some curb cuts where it looks like there's some ad hoc headed parking that was developed, but some of these curb cuts are 50 feet long and there's no definition for tactile boundaries at all through those areas. So we're aware that they do exist, and will certainly be part of our considerations, sure.
So the intersection of Main Street and Canal Street, which you're calling Malfunction Junction, actually has an opportunity because as, as your data is showing, huge amount of traffic, that's where a lot of your accidents are. And one of the things that is a missed opportunity so far is it would be possible to put a walkway underneath Main Street beside the Whetstone Brook, connecting the co-op parking lot to down where the train station is, and that connects to where Whetstone is and what's going to be a recreation area. It gives the people a chance to cross that very busy road without intersecting with traffic at all. And it's a, it would be a nice feature for the town to have that being close to the water and it, a huge safety improvement crossing that street that's so busy and so dangerous.
So you see that when it's during a heavy rain?
You don't have to go all the way to the water.
So I'm a little bit confused about the constraints on bicycle lanes relating to a high speed or high volume of traffic. If the, if the, if the, if the speed limit is 25, it seems that, that if cars are actually going faster than that, the, the concern would be to slow the cars down so that they, they would then be, it would be making it more safe for a, for a bicycle lane. Along with that, I'm wondering if you, part of your study looked at how many kids traveled from the high school or the middle school down Canal Street to downtown? It seems that that would be a natural place to have a good and protected bike lane to enable those kids to, to travel safely between places that they logically would want to travel between.
So you got a couple of things there that are important. The first thing is, unfortunately, you know, we put in speed limits, we put in things like that, but we can't design to what we want people to do. We have to design to what they're doing. So we could put in treatments that will slow traffic down, so maybe we can narrow these roads and put medians in and narrow lanes, and maybe the 40 miles an hour could get down to 35 or 30 or some, whatever it gets down to. Whatever the fact is, there's a volume of traffic at some speed that you don't want the bicycle to be running, driving unprotected against it. Now, there's ways to get bicycle lanes. All that means is we need some separation. Sometimes it's as little as a two-foot separation with, we could do it with paint, we could do it with bollards. If it's a little bigger, you can fully separate it. We can have complete off-road paths where we focus the, the car traffic on one side, and on the other side, we focus pedestrians and bicycles. There's, there's lots of treatments. We're going to go through a few at the end. So, so that's, you know, we, one of the goals of this study is to make it a bike, a bike, a bike, a bikeable corridor and a walkable corridor. So, you know, clearly, but there are some parameters. We don't want to design something for people in harm's way either.
One thing that I wonder when I compare the condition of a lot of sidewalks to roads is how much bumpier and cracked and, you know, turbulent a lot of sidewalks are compared to roads. And I figure there's a lot of factors why that may be, like, maybe sidewalks aren't made with as much like depth of engineering. They're made with concrete instead of asphalt. Maybe they're, you know, maintained on a more long schedule. But I wonder if that, if the same sort of, you know, like engineering or, or initial construction that's done on roads, if that was done on the sidewalks, would they last a lot longer? I realize if they were black, that'd be hot on barefoot walkers, but maybe they could be, it could be white asphalt. And is there easy ways to make them last longer, or am I analyzing this?
Sure. No, no, you're not. But when you, when you do that, you increase the cost. So roads are designed for, you know, two, 3,000 pound vehicles driving over them. Sidewalks are designed for people. So you don't have the structural integrity underneath it. Concrete sidewalks are generally better than Batum and this is a blacktop, for example. They don't tend to have the, the warping and stuff like that. They do crack, of course, but they don't tend to warp as much. So it's a higher quality product, the concrete.
Asphalt is your name?
No, concrete.
Concrete's a better product than asphalt, is your opinion?
It's, it's more durable.
Okay. So it's probably just that these sidewalks haven't been redone in decades or something? Where is the resilience first?
And budget allocation.
Just a quick question to understand better what was meant by resilience in Whetstone Brook corridor? I, I just wasn't, I didn't know what that was.
I would speak to that, yeah. It was a study that the town did with the EPA back in 2017, and we were looking at ways to basically have flood resilience and other benefits from basically the 250 Bird Street project into downtown. So it looked at things such as, you know, different development patterns, kind of flood storage, stormwater storage areas, as well as Whetstone Parkway idea of, are there off-road ways to get, to get transit?
Is there something going on with the Whetstone Parkway up in Manhattan?
Not right now. We can talk about that. The SLUD board did set aside some funds to study that side of the, your project later this year.
It seems that that would also address this because it offers that neighborhood up from Bird Street down an alternative as opposed to having to go out onto Canal Street. They would be able to have an off-road option.
Evan, I think there was one more question, and then we move on to the, over the two questions.
You said you're going to show us some possible treatments or solutions later?
Yeah, they're not going to be specific to Canal Street.
Intersection by intersection.
No, you're not going to be specific to Canal. The types of things that we'll be looking at, just to give you an idea of what our palette and our toolbox is.
The whole part of this evening is saying, this is a suite of things that might be appropriate for Burge and Washington.
That'll be studied later.
Next evening.
Okay.
We, we just didn't follow.
Okay, so you're not, maybe someone can have just the Martucci Henry Building? I don't understand, it doesn't need to be there anymore. Across from the Price Chopper, the building on the right. I feel like we're one lane short there. So I guess I'd put that on a sticky later and put it up.
Yeah.
And say, move it.
I'm not sure which building you're talking about, touch. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And you got a question too? Oh, no, okay, you don't.
I'm wondering how much consideration is being given to mitigation of elevation changes in, from, going from one end of town to the other? As somebody who is bicyclist who's partially disabled, I have to ride an e-bike because there's no way that I can pedal up these hills. It would be nice to have a bicycle lane all the way down Canal Street, but the fact that matters is that I try and avoid a lot of those areas as much as I possibly can because it's simply too much elevation change for the battery of my bike to handle if I have to go to the other end of town and back. Or if my bike breaks down and I have to take my old bike, I have to get off and walk up these hills.
Well, the topography here does not lend itself to necessarily reducing the total drop. If it was undulating, for example, we could look at, you know, thinning out crests and bringing the crest down or bringing the valley up. You really have, you know, going south to north, you really have, you know.
I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm wondering how much people have even alerted you guys to the fact that if you are planning to get from one end of town to the other, a lot of times you're going to be looking at these elevation changes. And I live at the end of South Main Street, and my route to get here was to go South Main to Pine Street, to Canal Street, to Bird Street, to Elliot Street, and up Main Street, because that's the flattest way for me to get here.
Yeah.
And get back.
That biked her home last night, too.
In fact, I've, I've lived down at that, I've lived down at that end of South Main Street for seven years now, and I only found out that Pine Street was the flattest way through last year.
Yeah.
That would be interesting. I think, I, I live on one end of the corridor and my office is on the other end, and I, I walk it a lot. That would be interesting to find a flatter way to go.
I, I used to take the elevator at the parking garage, just to get from Flag Street up to Elliot Street so many times.
There's elevation numbers on all these maps behind.
There are, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll encourage you to put notes on all the maps. Let's take one more question, and then we'll move on to the economic zone.
I have three points to share. The first being a segue about the elevation is that I recently saw that there was an invention, I think maybe in Finland or Norway, where on steep roads, they built what was, they were calling a bicycle elevator, which is basically like kind of a trolley of sorts where you would put your foot on this, I don't know if it can be used in the correct technical terms, but it's kind of like conveyor belt, and it pushes you and your bike up the hill. And, and so like, it's, it's really a convenient way to surmount those elevations.
Kind of like a rope tow.
Yeah, built, but built into the street.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that could be helpful here. And also, the high count for the injuries that happen along South Main and Canal Street is just, I think, a fraction of how like almost collisions happen there all of the time between cars on cars and cars on people, and, and bicycles too, in, in there. And it's just such a nightmare that I really would appreciate, and my neighbors as well, too, having speed bumps along people coming down South Main Street because of the decline there. People really tend to speed up. And also, having an actual car traffic stop sign there for cars that are coming from Canal Street onto South Main Street because they don't often, they choose to either not see or they, there is a blind spot for the pedestrian walkway on South Main Street when the car is on Canal Street turning onto South Main Street because the, the cars usually only see the caution spot that's right in front of them and not the turning one. So it's just super, super, super dangerous there. And, and there is also the point of like rest and shade areas. And I just say, I just, I feel so heartbroken about seeing how eight trees have been cut down by the Amtrak station and looks like how they're covering over that. It was a superfund site from the coal factory that was there. The soil is contaminated and they have to legally, if they were going to remove it, would bring it to a federal site to decontaminate it because like there's only a thin layer of plastic separating the turf from the contaminated coal soil. So we're not allowed to legally plant trees there because the trees would break the plastic root, through the plastic and like expose the contaminated soil. And it's because that area is in a higher flood zone. It, it's just, I think, so negligible to be putting a, a building there and keep the contaminated soil there if there was ever a flood that can flood out the contaminated soil there. So I, I don't appreciate the, thanks Joe Biden, like administration for using our taxes to pay for this cover-up, really signage that's going on there, taking away our only green by the water in downtown.
So make sure we put all these comments on the, on the maps at the end.
I just want to clarify because it's kind of important. It is not a superfund site. It's a brownfield site, and there is, there is differences there. So we can talk about the site and what can be done there, but it's not superfund.
Talk about economic.
I'm wondering, and if I missed the statistical stuff, did, was there a study done on the types of traffic, like tractor-trailer trucks versus pedestrian, normal home vehicles versus construction equipment? Because there's also construction companies that are just off of Canal Street that run their equipment out. And tractor-trailer trucks, the volume that occurs on that road?
We, in this presentation, we did not touch on that. We do have some lower-level account information. This is very high-level that I presented tonight, and I would expect that that information would have some of the things you're talking about. We call it the vehicle mix or the vehicle classification mix.
Well, I, I'm just interested in how that plays into the volume and the types of traffic play into the plan for more bicycles and pedestrian walkways, and possibly narrowing the travel portion of the road to accommodate some of that, how that would increase possible harm to both pedestrians and bicycle traffic, as well as disability for people accessing businesses, homes, side streets?
Yes. So a couple of things. One, we will be designing, whatever we do, it's going to be conceptual, but the lane widths and things like that that we use, we'll assume that will be used by trucks. So for instance, a through straight travel lane will be 11 feet. The old days, they used to be 12, and some environments you can go as low as 10 or 9 and 1/2, but we'll be designing at 11 feet. The other place we'll take into account trucks is, we'll be looking at what we call curb extensions. So if you have an intersection and you have parking on Canal Street and the intersection coming out, one of the pedestrian treatments we could do is put what we call bump outs or curb extensions. But those curb extensions will have to allow for, for instance, if we were to do a neighbor street, we'd have to make sure all emergency vehicles could navigate the intersection safely. So we will, we'll take it to those things into account. So the short answer is, all of that comes into play.
And this is going to give you a little bit more of the why and, and how we can prepare.
Do your work, Ali.
Thank you. I love to talk transportation too and that. But the land use components of the project are also really important and help us understand what's happening in the corridor. So in terms of social vulnerability, because we're, we're looking at all of this through the lens of equity as well, so we want to understand, you know, who are the people who live in this environment? And how are they, how are they navigating the areas? We're going to also look at things like commuting, commute mode. But the area has a lower median household income compared to the rest of Rattleboro. So when we say this area, we're actually talking the census tract that includes the study area. There are three census tracts in Rattleboro. This is one of them that's obviously bigger than the study area. There is, there are 17.5% of the households have no vehicle. So that means people are walking or biking or using transit for their transportation to get around. The unemployment rate is slightly higher in this area, too, than it is in the rest of Rattleboro. And limited English speaking is also slightly higher. It's, it's, it's still a very low number, but it, it's higher than in the rest of Rattleboro. So, you know, these are things to consider. Employment, unsurprisingly, in the area, healthcare is, is ones large with the hospital being right there in the center of it.
On the slide before, I was just wondering, is, is there any way to know in that area how many people with disabilities live there and what kind of disabilities they might have? how many people with disabilities live there and what kind of disabilities they might have?
I think you are a step ahead of me. That's on, I think, the next slide. Thought we had that on one of these slides.
It might be in the back.
Yeah, it might be in the back. It is also a relatively large percentage. I think it's in the back of our slide deck, but I can reference that at the end. It's a good question. In terms of employment, as I said, healthcare is looming large and social assistance, manufacturing and educational services as well. So the high school and Oak Grove School are in this corridor. That, these three industries making up 64.3% of all the employment in the study area and the hospital is the largest employer. This was interesting to me because almost half of residents travel within Rattleboro for work. That's, that's a really large percentage. And 60% are traveling 10 miles or less to get to work. That's also very, it doesn't track necessarily with, with the national averages where it's more like, I think, 30, 30 minutes almost or 28 minutes is the average commute time nationally on average. So 11.6% of residents walk to work. That's also very high for a, you know, relatively small community as Rattleboro is. So a lot of residents, the majority are traveling by car or truck. That, that's pretty normal. But there, there are some interesting things here that, taking into account. So plans, we talked about, you know, the, the plans that we referenced to understand what's happening here in Rattleboro. The town plan in 2018 had some goals for economic development that include strategies that increase prosperity and opportunity, ensuring a healthy community that respects the physical environment, fostering growth of industry in food, forestry, transportation and logistics and manufacturing, precision manufacturing and green energy. Provision of infrastructure that's vital for economic growth, which certainly includes transportation infrastructure. And the community's commitment to development through grants and town-controlled funds. So those are, again, some of the lenses we're looking at all of this through. When we were talking about how to, what are the workarounds for how to get around some of the hills, I remember that the downtown plan had some, something called the way around that had some really creative ideas for how to get around downtown. We can look at things like that and the comment, gentleman who looks like left, talking about, you know, creative ways to use the Wedstone, paths along the Wedstone or under roads, you know. There are creative ways to, to think about how to, how to get around. Increasing resiliency by incorporating green stormwater, and Brian's going to talk a little bit about those opportunities. And anyway, the Canal Street wasn't really a huge part of the downtown plan because it was more downtown focused, of course. But it's an important, obviously conduit through, through town and connecting to downtown. I mentioned this before, the gateway strategy. You know, it, it had some ideas for how to make, you know, areas that were more pedestrian friendly. We've been looking carefully at these, especially the corridor or the intersection around the Market 32. And there are also a bunch of projects that are kind of either underway or, or being considered. Obviously, we talked about the relocation of the bridge from Vernon Street to across the river, relocating the Amtrak station. There is the new park off of, at the end of Burge Street, which is going to be a nice destination to get to off of Canal Street. There may be some new housing at the area that's currently a car wash. Apparently, it was considered to be a larger car wash, but no, housing is being considered there. That would really activate that area and make it more of a, there would be more pedestrian bicycle activity there likely. The laundromat is certainly a big draw in that area too, an important facility for folks. The Winston Proudie campus will have its proposing 300 housing units and an enormous amount of new commercial activity. And the town owns six parcels near the kettle pond, which could be another housing opportunity. So all of these things are kind of like in the corridor, a little bit tangential. Also, where we were talking about South Main Street at Canal, we had considered some improvements that include different kinds of crosswalk treatments there when we were doing the walk-bike action plan. That was something that came out of that project. So these are kind of, it feels a little scattershot, but it is all kind of in this focus area. This is just a little more detail. I think I went over all of this already. Market 32 Plaza area, I think one of the things interesting about this is just the vacancy rate is actually pretty high. A little on the, you know, challenging side. It's, it's something to consider. You know, what, what are other commercial things, businesses that could go in there to, to make it more vibrant and to fill those vacancies?
Holly, did you skip over a slide that showed that area? That's not just the plaza. It's a little bit bigger. Or the slide got moved.
Oh, I think it's next. It's that one.
Okay.
Oh, no, that's in front of the conference.
We might have taken that out because of.
Anyway, the market, the, the area that it's referring to is kind of the exit one to kind of the hospital. So it's not just the Market 32 Plaza. It's looking at that kind of area.
Yeah, including towards Fairview Street.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Ed Burge and Washington. There's a lot of kind of car-oriented businesses there. The mechanic shop, gas station, auto dealer. As we said, the laundromat is an essential community service. This vacancy rate looks really alarming, but it's, it relates to the fact that there, there aren't a ton of businesses there. It's a very small amount of businesses, but, you know, because two or three of them are vacant, it looks like a high vacancy rate. But again, there, there are certainly opportunities there to, to make it more of a, more of a draw and more, more vibrant economically speaking. So the town actually updated its land use and development regulations just last year. So the area, there are five zoning districts in this area. We'll talk a little bit about what each one of them is that relates to a focus area we've discussed. So we have the, the neighborhood centers where the Market 32 area is. That's near the highway served by public transit and municipal infrastructure. It's, the idea there is to, is to transform that area into more, more neighborhood scale commercial activity, more compact and mixed-use development, maybe higher density residential info. And because it's sort of already a draw, you know, make it even more vibrant and, and walkable certainly. The mixed-use neighborhood is the area around Burge, Canal and Washington. And the idea there is to promote diverse housing opportunities, safe streets. I like how safe streets come up in all of these essentially, you know, that's, that's certainly a priority for the town. And protecting and enhancing historic and neighborhood character. The area around the kettle pond, so near the high school, that district is, is intending to encourage diverse housing also and encourage an increase in the town's housing stock. And again, walkable neighborhoods that balance protection of the neighborhood and character and quality of life. And you'll see why that is important. On this slide, there are some environmental constraints that will come up when we consider different development opportunities. So the, the lighter green circle there is threatened and endangered plant species. The orange striped area is uncommon plant species. And then around the Burge-Washington Canal area, you know, there's wetlands in the very bright green. There's flood hazard in the teal blue. And regulatory floodway is the Wedstone Brook either side and the Connecticut River area.
And just to note about the rare threatened and endangered, or I can't remember what the other term is. It doesn't mean that they're situated all in that area. The state has always been vague about where they are. It just meant that they were found somewhere in that area. But it doesn't mean that they're ever left.
This is what happens when you take a deep dive on something. So I'm going to pass the time to Brian to talk about stormwater.
Can I ask a question about the kettle pond? It's directly in my backyard. So what do you mean by that?
So the town owns a couple of parcels there and there's a right-of-way. And so, you know, they're undeveloped parcels. And so is there potential for some sort of development, some sort of housing development there? It's kind of something just to think about and see if it would even be formidable. But because of the zoning district it is in, it would be residential. But the kettle pond itself is so unique, there could be some constraints there.
Yeah, so good evening, everyone. Wanted to take a few minutes to talk a little bit about the storm drainage and that component of this project. This first slide kind of gives a quick overview of what the area looks like. The Canal Street drainage system is quite expansive and includes drainage on both sides. So that it would be on the east and west side of Canal Street as well as in Canal Street. Just a quick update on where we are as far as the storm drainage. We've done some data gathering and reviewed a lot of the past studies. We've toured the site both with Department of Public Works and also on our own to just verify some of the network, the pipe networks. It's not shown on here because it is so expansive, but what is shown, the yellow line, of course, is the Canal Street project area. But the shaded areas are what's drained, what drains down to the Canal Street. And we've kind of split it out into three different areas. The purplish color is the kettle pond that Holly was just talking about. So that's actually located right here, that green, green circle. So all of that purple area gets to the kettle pond in one fashion or another. The blue area in the middle, we're just referring it to as like mid Canal Street. That's an area that we know has some issues. One thing to point out is there's a diversion structure right here. And what that does is actually split the flow. The, the main path is for the water to, to pass along Canal Street. However, if the flow picks up enough, it gets split and it'll, it'll flow along Burge and then Brook Street. And then the green colored area is the, what we're just referring to as the downtown drainage. So there's a few drainage systems in that area as well. And just to give a little bit of perspective on the size, the overall area is about 230 acres for the kettle pond. So that's the purple area. And then the blue area is about 130 acres and the green about 30 acres. So it gives a little bit of context on the size and how much water we're dealing with here. Let's see. So all of those little red squares are some of the primary outfalls. So you can see there's several outfalls from the storm drainage systems. And that just means where the pipe ends and the water comes out of the ground. So there's several around the kettle pond. There's three for the mid Canal. And then there's three on the downtown, no, the downtown system. So those are just the outfall locations from the storm drainage systems. Another feature to identify, and they're shown as the little blue circles that you can see, those are some of the existing treatment areas. So there is a stormwater pond behind the Market 32. There's a stormwater, above-ground stormwater treatment at the Red Clover Commons in the back. There was a, we didn't actually see this, but on some of the plans in the past studies, there is a underground treatment at this medical facility that's on Fairview Street and as well as an underground infiltration system at the Rattleboro Hospital. So those are some of the existing water treatment. But you can tell there's not a lot right now in this overall study area that we're looking at.
How is stormwater treated with these blue circles?
So there's a number of different ways, but if they're spaced, usually it's like an above-ground stormwater pond or basin where the water comes in, it's treated, it's filtered with vegetation and they infiltrate. And it's held there for a certain amount of time and then it's released slowly. So that's more of like a general above-ground treatment practice. Underground systems, there are so many different kinds, but they're usually a storage, some sort of storage feature underground and some will infiltrate and some will just hold the water for a little bit and allow it to discharge slowly. So yeah, that's, that's generally an overview of the existing, existing system that we're looking at. Like I said, there's, on all of the little side streets, there are drainage systems that tie into Canal Street. There are catch basins where the water goes into the ground and then pipe systems and swales and whatnot that, that collect the stormwater. Can we switch to the next slide? So this is a, kind of like a quick overview on some of the primary issues that we've been seeing. And, you know, as Holly and Dave mentioned, this is a good point for us to, to try and get some feedback from all you folks on where there might be additional issues that we don't know about yet. But just to point out some, to start with, you know, at these outfall locations, where the red circles are, that's where you tend to see some erosion and that can impact stormwater where the sediment is being carried downstream into the rivers and into the kettle pond, which is interesting because there's, there's not an outlet, right? So the water just gets into the kettle pond and then fluctuates with the groundwater. So bringing, bringing the, whatever the stormwater is carrying with it. So just starting at the top. So as you can tell, most of the drainage area is, is largely developed. We just showed some yellow circles indicating where the, some issues with maybe the, the size of the system, the pipe diameter and the capacity of that system is not, is not adequate enough to handle how much water is getting to it or is aging. So it could be beyond its useful life and starting to deteriorate and in need of some repairs. And then also, this area around, from like the hospital where it starts to go down the hill, is an area that's known to, what happens is the catch basin system where the water gets captured is not capable of capturing, capturing at all during heavy rain. So it starts to overland flow and you get water along the gutters and, and it just follows the terrain. And so when that happens, you get issues where, so it will turn down Burge Street, flows along Brook Street, causing some, some localized flooding to private properties. And then even, in some instances, it flows down towards this paving business here. There's a pond here and can cause some localized erosion and flooding issues there as well. Let's see. So again, limited water quality treatment in the, in the watershed now. And at the. And at the Burj Street, we talked about where the water can split during the heavy rains. And at the kettle pond, there's a lot of drainage that comes right down through here and it ends up in a little channel behind these homes. And some of these homes on Wilson Woods Road have also experienced some flooding during some heavy rains. And then at all of these outfalls, there's signs of erosion, which, you know, brings the sediment right into the kettle pond as well. So our next steps is to really look more detailed at some of those drainage areas and start to segment them out so we can focus on what is, like the amount of water and how much water we need to treat. And then start to look, you know, where are there opportunities to do that? Having such a developed watershed, it's difficult to do that. And there's a lot of constraints as well with the soil type. Is it suitable for infiltration? And is there space enough to have an above-ground style of treatment practice? Or will it need to be an underground system, which adds expense and also maintenance as well? And then just in general, look at some of the drainage systems that, you know, how can we maybe improve those collection systems and plan out for the town? You know, maybe there's a phasing opportunity to slowly begin to repair and improve the storm drainage. So that's kind of an overview of where we are at this point.
Thank you. Any questions on stormwater?
Yes.
Do you plan to improve or change some of the stormwater issues before, does any design plan for Canal Street or?
Well, I think it's, that's the idea was to try and do it in conjunction with this bike pad project so that, you know, if there are improvements done to the street and at that level, then we can also be thinking about how do we do the stormwater improvements at the same time.
If you don't do those stormwater improvements, then it wouldn't make any kind of changes on Canal Street. You wouldn't be able to do them, the state?
Well, it's better to try and do it together. I think if it's striping, it's one thing, but if it's like reconstructing sidewalks and pavement and then having to dig it back up to put in new pipes, that would be a little bit different. So the idea is that's, I think, why the town wanted to look at these at the same time so that we can plan, you know, plan them together and accordingly.
Have you identified like stormwater issues that, say, some issues that you couldn't address, but that would put constraints on any project?
We haven't identified anything specific to that yet. It's going to be kind of a, you know, balancing act with working with Dave and Holly on how that, you know, the pipes are one thing. We can really understand how large of a pipe we need to pass the water. But the treatment part of it gets a little more complicated because you have to have some space and where the water can go and get treated and then continue on downstream.
Is bioswale an example?
Bioswale is a good example. Yeah, so you could just treat a swale, like a grass swale. That could be a treatment practice that could work in some instances.
In cities, they often are kind of at the curb.
Yeah.
So, you know, as you're doing your.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot of like urban style of treatment practices, but they tend to treat smaller areas. So there needs to be more of them rather than, you know, a bigger practice that might be at the end of a pipe. These are like scattered throughout your drainage areas.
We are still in the existing conditions of the project. So we're, it's the discovery time. So we're figuring out all of the, you know, what's out there and what to do with it.
And I could speak a little bit to the kettle pond. It seemed like that was an enormous area that was draining into the kettle pond.
It is.
And I never see a whole lot of the water changing in depth. So it just seems like that much area draining into that little kettle pond. All of those green dots must be ponds as well?
Yeah, so there is a wet area up here behind the Market 32 area that, so a lot of the hillside comes down, crosses under the highway and there's a drainage way that it collects here. That might do some like attenuation of the stormwater itself. That's kind of what wet areas do naturally. And then it continues along the, I think, this way, finds its way across through the Red Clover Common and then works its way down through there. And then there's a few smaller drainage areas from the high school and the Department of Public Works that drains up this way and some of these neighborhoods that drain off those two sides.
So they, kind of the word on our street is that the kettle pond is polluted. So I'm kind of hoping that as you improve things, that you may improve the health of the kettle pond.
I think that would be one of the primary goals is to.
There's just so much stuff draining into it.
Yeah.
That isn't clean anymore. There used to be an enormous amount of animal life in it and there just isn't anymore. So it's a real shame. I mean, it's a beautiful, true Vermont pond.
Yeah.
But it's kind of, I tell my kids, don't ever go near it. You know, it's just kind of, wow.
I will add that some of these drainage areas, we're still trying to finalize. There's some areas that we're working with the Department of Public Works to just verify what way this drainage goes. So this is shown as 230 acres. It may get a little bit smaller as we verify that, but it is a large area.
Yeah, the water level gets lower, but I never really see it get much higher.
Interesting.
So.
Good observation.
Yeah.
All right, well, we're almost done. Dave, are you gonna?
Sure.
Take us home?
Since I teased this earlier. So these, just to be clear again, these are not, you'll see, these are not on Canal Street. But these are the, some of the types of treatments we'll be looking at. And they range the gamut. Some are very simple, some are more elaborate. Some of the ones, this is a very simple one, but very effective, which is just enhancing crosswalk visibility. And that helps for two reasons. One, for instance, when you're using a brick paver or stamped concrete or something, the maintenance part of it, they don't fade away. So you don't have to repaint them every spring after the snow dissipates. Refuge Islands, you know, these are particularly useful where you have wide openings and you don't need all the pavement, but you can't necessarily bring the curbs in. This is an opportunity to shorten the crosswalk by cutting it in half. Rectangular rapid flesh and beacon, I know there's, I've seen at least one through town, but essentially that's just a traffic control device that gives an extra level of safety for pedestrians. This is the curb extension. This is a unique one and is particularly important because without this, you wouldn't have room on a sidewalk without bringing the sidewalk up and down to get the accessibility. So this is one way to get accessibility plus you shorten the crossing distance. Raised crosswalks or raised intersections, these are serve dual functions. They make it safer for pedestrians, but they also slow down traffic. So they're traffic calming pedestrian improvements.
Raised crosswalks, how do they hold up to winter maintenance?
DPWs typically don't like them. But the designs have gotten better. The approaches to them have gotten more gradual and parabolic so that you're not, you know, doing this. You're coming up more gradually to hump and then you plateau and you come back down.
And then we just say conversations with our public works, Traffic Safety Committee, they're not opposed to that. Sometimes stormwater can be an issue, a little bit of pumping and stuff. We don't have any currently.
Yeah, I did. I wasn't casting any. This is a sample of a gateway that we were looking at. This is a project we did in Norwalk, Connecticut. But again, this, I guess the point here is this has pedestrian treatments, it has some curb extensions, there's off-road bikes, but more importantly, it has all those things. And then you could beautify it with plantings and you could have welcome signs. There's lots of things you can do that make it not just something that's for function, but is also giving you the dual objective or triple objective of place making and gatewaying.
And the planting area is also an opportunity for water treatment.
Good point.
Brian?
Yes. Where our office is, they have a lot of curb extensions and almost all the new curb extensions, they're incorporating a bioswale with it.
A rain garden.
Yeah. Buffet bike lanes, this is what we were talking about earlier. Depending on many factors, you have different options for incorporating bikes and things like this. This is one concept. This particular study we did, this is one of three or four concepts we had. But you can see this was a painted buffer because the speed's, not necessarily the volume in this case, but the speed dictated that we should have some buffer between the travelway and the bike lane.
I thought it was 35 miles an hour.
We also had a concept where we had a complete off-road trail for bikes and pads and that way we didn't have to do anything on the other side of the road. Roundabouts, they're certainly give you a great opportunity for all of the above. They're, you have to be careful that you don't forget about bikes and pedestrians because roundabouts by definition are a car treatment, a traffic calming treatment, a safety treatment. So you have to be very intentional.
But this one is one of the ones that was proposed, that is proposed for Putney Road. And you see that there is accommodation here, a separated accommodation for bicycles to go through the intersection.
Correct. And a pair with a crossing.
Yeah.
Gives you the ability there. It has the refuge islands in between. So if you have to make, which have to be very intentional when you're doing something that you're accommodating all users. Another one that's kind of fun is intersection area. And this is just taking the painted crosswalk or the high-visibility crosswalk and taking it a step further. And this is a tremendous traffic calming because as you're driving down the road and you see something like this, a mural in the middle of the intersection, you're going to slow down and look at it. It also tends to be a milepost, you know, go to the tool up in the road and take a This is more of a traditional one, which is not as fun, but it certainly has the same purpose, the same function and the same effectiveness. So these are just some of them. There's a whole toolbox. One of the things that we didn't talk a lot about was, go to the next one, is all of these things, you know, what's back of our mind in everything we do is safety. So we want to make it convenient. We want to make traffic go slower. We want to accommodate bikes. We want to accommodate pedestrians. But whatever we do, we want to make it safe. The Federal Highway Administration has studied some of this stuff and we've actually done some before and after studies ourselves. But for example, this is what we call a road diet. So this is where if you have two-lane sections or maybe you get rid of a turn lane, you're narrowing the travelway. So if you take a travelway from two lanes to one lane, FHWA has found out that you get up to a 47% reduction in total crashes. This particular one, we've tested ourselves. We did a project. It was a one-way road with parking on both sides that had two lanes of traffic. And we took one of the lanes away, put some buffer strips on each side for bicycles and door swings and things like that. We did a one-year follow-up study and it crashes reduced by 70%. So these do work. These are some other ones, high-visibility crosswalks we talked about, raised crosswalks, you see 40, 50, 56% for raised mediums and the crossing islands or pedestrian refuge islands, countdown signal heads on the traffic signals, very important. I didn't talk much about that, but I did talk about us looking at what you have out there. But you could bring everything up to the new standards. LPI, you know, there's not a lot of signals out here. So I'm not sure that this is, this is something where you don't have exclusive pedestrians, meaning the pedestrians are still going with the vehicles, but you give the pedestrians a little bit of a head start so that they're not coming off the curb, they're halfway across the street before you get to green. So somebody had mentioned about the right turn going down South Main, that sometimes you don't see the pedestrians. So this is one way that that helps because the right turn visibility is slowed up so that the right turners have the ability to see the pedestrian. Bump outs help for that to the curb extension. So improved overhead lighting, separated, protect the bicycle lanes. This is one of the menus, but this is one of our guiding principles. Is this going to be effective to mitigate the safety concerns that we identify through the crash analysis or through our fieldwork? So. Yes?
Thank you. So for the welcoming signs and interactive artwork that you had mentioned, have you or are you going to reach out to members of the Oronak or Wallenak First Nations to have indigenous dress translations with those signs too?
I don't think, I think that would be at an implementation phase, so I wouldn't expect to do anything like that during the planning.
The type of thing that our product will be, will be similar to what you see here. So it's, we're not, it's not going to be a landscape plan where we're identifying plants and sign legends and things like that. We're going to, for instance, show a roundabout in a planted area and say, great place for a sign that says, "Welcome to Brattleboro."
Slade of Tesco and DeKina.
Slade.
Yeah.
Yes. If you put that on the stick, you will make sure.
I just relocated here, actually from Stanford, America, so I'm familiar with Norwalk. And when I left, they're also implementing new crosswalks and making it very pedestrian-friendly. One of the things that they mentioned, the mayor mentioned, was how the, in the crosswalk area, it wasn't very well laid out or directed for blind people, you know, even though you have the bumps and stuff like that.
We hate the bumps.
Pardon?
We hate the bumps.
Yeah, well, I don't know. The mayor there just mentioned something about it not being really effective towards the purpose, the intention of directing them. So I just wondered if that was part of the landscape and the crosswalks. And then the other thing, I was wondering, being on Canal Street, more specifically about the traffic flow, like I noticed a lot of trucks, right, going and buses and mover. And I don't see any like turnoff really. Like in some of the roads in Stanford, you know, in comparison, had kind of like a, you know, an area for like buses to pull into to drop people off and stuff like that. And I wondered if something like that would be incorporated in these street designs?
Possibly. I mean, you know, we're not there yet, but they, when you do a bump out, you have to, it affects the accommodations of the rest of the stuff. So as you do a bump out, for instance, if you have a bike lane, then you have to cross the vehicle bumped out so you have a different treatment as you go through there. And you've probably seen in Stanford, they'll do the dashes. And you've probably seen it in Stanford, they'll do the dashes.
Yeah.
On the bike lane. So there's ways to do it, just it complicates things a little bit. But certainly if there's enough transit activity and it makes sense, you know, maybe in, maybe in downtown, maybe on either end of the corridor, for example, it might make sense to have a place for the bus to dwell, assuming, you know, the spaces in between, they're thinking of putting up shelters so that people are not in the elements if possible. But again, these, these are all considerations. They take a right-of-way as well.
And I noticed that in one area where I would like actually bike, because I did a lot of biking in Stanford, it was a little flatter there. So I would have timed it here. But there was like a, almost like a side, side ramp for the, for the bikes, like alongside the sidewalk in some cases. It was just another, I don't know.
So you come up onto the sidewalk to ride?
Yeah, it separated. I don't know, maybe it was to go around the bus, you know, for the bus thing, but there was just these other, I don't know, other aspects of the, of bike lanes and stuff like that. So it's, it's very daunting when you have a lot of traffic going by.
But when we get into that, that level of detail, we'll be sure to be speaking with the right stakeholders who have, you know, knowledge about. Like Sue's going to do some ride-alongs, right, and Gary on transit on the mover to, to kind of ask people about their experience in the facilities and.
Yeah, because mitigating like bike lanes and buses that are dropping people off and, you know, that's kind of.
The challenge.
Challenge, yeah, daunting.
And signage, it was a great point too. When we start talking about the details, you know, absolutely make sure we're, we, you know, we get your recommendations for who to talk to there. I wonder if you're new here, if you know that you can, you can rent an e-bike from the library.
Oh.
For up to a week, isn't it?
Yeah.
I could test those hills.
When we started the Walk Bike Action Plan, we, we rode all around Brattleboro like six miles and like we weren't even breathing hard, it was so fun. You know?
It's actually Friday to the following Wednesday is the rent.
Oh, really? It's not quite over.
I'm, I'm one of the volunteers who helps check out flights.
Oh, thank you. That, it's such a great program and, and, you know, it's, so it's no risk if you want to try an e-bike, just, you know, borrow one, no cost and, and try it out.
I'm just wondering, just by painting buffer on a bike lane, does that really provide enough safety for, you know, I, I just have trouble believing that paint is enough to create a safe bike lane.
In, in many cases it's not. Again, we're, we're, in this particular case that was shown up there, it was an appropriate mitigation or concept. But, you know, as I said, depending on the environment, the speeds, what's, what's happening in the corridor, there's different treatments that are acceptable. You know, sometimes, for instance, the next step is to take this and put bolids in it. So you, you have a more vertical separation as well. The next step after that is to make it a physical median and plant it. Maybe it's a three-foot grass strip or something like that. The next thing is to take it all the way off the road and put it on the other side of the sidewalk and make it a complete off-path facility. So there's different levels of, of appropriateness depending on the particular.
But you couldn't do those first two in a town that has a lot of snow.
That, they, it snows in, in Norwalk.
Yeah.
They, they do make special equipment for, for some of the smaller pathways and some of it has to be done by hand probably, but it's. All right, please keep asking questions, but also please write some notes on sticky notes and put them, please peruse the, the maps up here and if there's any particular areas that you use a lot, you know, focus in on them and give us the juicy details.
Yeah, I want to thank you all for coming and please give us your ideas. I hope you all signed in and we'll keep you apprised of what's going on in the next community meeting. There's also on the town's website, there is a project page, we'll put the slides up from, from the presentation tonight on there.